Good evening, and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority meeting September 24th, 2024. Madam Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Councilmember Bowles, Councilmember Peacock, Councilmember Montoya, Councilmember Grant, Councilmember Nash, Councilmember Hinkle, Councilmember Holman, Councilmember Dixon, Mayor Heikle.
I am here. Will you all please join me in the pledge of Item number one, a proclamation of the mayor proclaiming the month of October as pedestrian safety month in the city of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
Second.
A motion and second. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes. There we go. Now you can cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to acknowledge the receipt of the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read the proclamation. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of October as pedestrian safety month in the city of Norman. Whereas the city of Norman, Oklahoma, is committed to the safety and well-being of all its residents and visitors, and whereas pedestrian safety is a fundamental concern, and fostering a safe environment for pedestrians is essential for the vitality and health of our community, and whereas we acknowledge the tremendous value and vibrancy that walkable districts like Campus Corner and downtown bring to our city, serving as hubs of culture, commerce, and community gathering, and reinforcing the importance of pedestrian safety, and whereas raising awareness about pedestrian safety during the month of October, when daylight hours decrease, is critical to ensuring the safety of pedestrians and reducing accidents and injuries, and whereas educating the public about safe pedestrian practices and encouraging responsible driver behavior is essential in preventing pedestrian accidents and fatalities, and whereas the city of Norman is dedicated to improving the pedestrian infrastructure and accessibility to create a more walkable and vibrant community, and whereas the city of Norman, in partnership with Embark, has undertaken significant enhancements to our public transit system, including the implementation of rude improvements in the opening of a state-of-the-art transit center aimed at providing safer, more efficient, and accessible transportation options to better serve our transit users, and whereas it is with heavy hearts that we recognize that in the period from 2015 to 2021, our city witnessed the loss of 12 precious lives due to pedestrian accidents, and 31 individuals sustained life-altering injuries, and these tragic incidents serve as a solemn reminder to prioritize pedestrian safety. Now therefore I, mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of October as pedestrian safety month in Norman, Oklahoma. I call upon all residents, businesses, schools, community organizations, and government agencies to participate in activities and initiatives that enhance pedestrian safety, including educational programs, public awareness campaigns, and efforts to improve our pedestrian infrastructure. I'd like to recognize Mr. Jose Jimenez to come up and get the proclamation.
Yeah, thank you, everyone. My name is Jose Jimenez. I'm a transportation planner with the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments. One of my roles there is just kind of, you know, helping our communities like Norman, you know, improve their pedestrian and bicycle safety. And I was a college student here at Norman. I was a, you know, OU graduate, and so I know very well, you know, how walkable and how great of a community, you know, Norman is. And it's good to see Norman investing in more multi-use trails. Just right now on the way here, you know, I was able to see the construction on Flood Avenue, and so that's really great, you know, just giving more people different ways to get around and, you know, grow the economic and, you know, vitality of Norman in general. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Now time for council announcements, and I'll start with Ward Eight.
Ward Eight, excuse me. It's on the consent docket. We're going to be getting a stoplight at 36 in Bark Connor. The work should be starting relatively soon. No, it's not going to be starting relatively soon. How long? Eighteen months out. Okay, so we've got time. But that is on the consent docket tonight, and other than that, no announcements.
Councilmember?
Thank you. Couple things. We have the fall cleanup days are coming up for all of Norman, starting on the 28th of this month and running every weekend until the 26th of October. Most of Ward Seven, including my neighborhood, will be on the 12th of October, so keep that in mind. If you've got stuff you want to place out by the curb that you're trying to get rid of, those are the dates, and you can check the city website for, to see which trash day is yours. Also wanted to note the Aviation Festival this weekend, the Saturday at 9:00 a.m., is going on at the airport here in Norman. And then also wanted to thank all of the local businesses that participated in the Brewtober Fest at Reeves Park Friday night, the fourth annual one, and keeps getting bigger every year. And it's just one more of the wonderful festivals we have at Reeves Park in Ward Seven every year. And it's real exciting, especially for me, living in the neighborhood next to it, being able to just walk over to the park and enjoy those festivities and walk back home. Pretty great time, and I would encourage everybody to consider attending that event next year. And then this Thursday at 4:00 here at City Hall, we have the Community Planning and Transportation Committee meeting, where we will get our monthly update on transit ridership, as was just discussed as part of that proclamation, improvements that we're making to our public transit system, discussion about ongoing road construction projects, upcoming projects that we have going on, and things like that. So if you're interested, you're welcome to attend in person here at 4:00 p.m., or you can watch live on the City of Norman YouTube channel as well. And then it's available to watch anytime afterwards, as are all of our city meetings. And then last thing, just want to encourage everybody to remember to register to vote. The deadline in Oklahoma is October 11th, if you're wanting to vote in the November 5th elections. So October 11th, and in Oklahoma, you can now register to vote online. So be sure to exercise your right to do so. Thanks.
Councilmember?
Good evening, Ward Six in Norman. This previous weekend, we, due to sports tourism, we had a pretty amazing environment happen in our city. All of our hotels were rented out, all of the rental cars were rented, and I think there was a pretty amazing environment that happened in our city, as well as the reviews from the people who visited online seemed to love our city a whole lot, too, and the people in our city. So thank you to everybody who participated in that and gave Norman a good reputation for our future visitors. And that's all.
Councilmember?
Yeah. So I only have one announcement. Last week, we passed an ordinance that established the creation of a TIF district, and there's a group of citizens out there that believe that that's a decision that should be placed in front of the people on a ballot, and they'll be collecting signatures every day at the Root Salon over in Porter and Main Street on the southwest corner. That's it.
Councilmember?
Yes. Good evening, Ward Four in City of Norman. I've been busy these past couple weeks. I attended the Oklahoma Municipal League Conference in Tulsa from September 10th through 12th, and thank you to those council members who read my announcements, where I learned of a developing initiative to change the structure of funding for cities because sales tax is not enough. This week, I'm in Midwest City at the Oklahoma Housing Conference, getting quite the education on affordable housing and housing issues and strategies, and that lasts from September 24th through the 26th. I heard from Lieutenant Governor Pennell the same messaging I heard at the Oklahoma Municipal League, which is that we have to change the way we fund cities. He also talked about the growth in Oklahoma's population and how cities, especially smaller ones, struggle to upgrade the kinds of infrastructure necessary to support additional housing and density. He also called the housing crisis a workforce issue, and I could not agree more. I also got to see a demo model of a 350-foot square, or square foot tiny home that costs about $50,000 to purchase and install. For reference, the 350 square feet is about half of what is allowed in our ADU ordinance, which is 650. Given some of the feedback I've gotten from constituents in Ward Four about ADUs and the barriers people see with the current construction costs and financing options, I think the one I saw earlier today could offer a more affordable option, and I will post about that on my social media later. Last, I want to say congratulations to the newlywed couple that owns and works at Oscillator Press, Jenna Bryan and Eric Piper. They are two artists from Bernoseville and Lawton who graduated and stayed in Norman. They are a great example of a mom-and-pop mainstream shop. I'm glad their business is still going strong post-pandemic and that they were able to make their live-work-play partnership government official. Thank you.
Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Ward Three in Norman, Oklahoma. I hope this evening finds you all well. Just one announcement regarding our fall cleanup. If your Polycart service is Monday, then your fall cleanup day will be September 28th, and if your Polycart service is on Tuesday, then that will be October 5th. Thank you all for being here.
Councilmember?
I just want to thank the mayor for his proclamation tonight and say that every month should be pedestrian safety month.
Councilmember?
I'm going to echo what Councilman Hinkle said. This weekend was amazing. I know cell data is still showing that people are coming to Norman, they're staying in Norman, they're spending money in Norman. So we lost, but it was still an amazing weekend. Firehouse Art Center is having some classes coming up for children, veterans. Look on their website. If you're interested in art, they have a lot of free classes for everyone. So amazing organization here. This morning, I met with Chief Foster, Assistant Chief Jackson, Major Shattuck, Major Vincent. Major Vincent just returned to Norman. He's been in Quantico for the last three months, doing FBI classes there. He graduated, and that just shows what a professional and amazing police force we have here. Some of the things we talked about, we talked about spider tech. What spider tech is, it's a new system they have in operation there, that from the time that you call, it sends you an email, it sends you a text message, it lets you know that your report's been received, it lets you know when an officer's been assigned. It keeps you updated of what's going on, and it allows customer feedback. And I got to see a lot of the reviews, and we're doing amazing. Our citizens think we have a very professional and just an amazing police department. So to those guys, keep it up. We talked about mental health. We've had some issues inside of our police department. I'm not going to talk about it here, but mental health, for what they do, is an extremely, extremely important thing. And so anything we can do to help our officers out, just keep them in your prayers. We talked about SROs. Two weeks ago, when my kid was out on recess, we had a 17-year-old steal a car here. She was driving erratically, she was putting people's lives in danger. The police were trying, attempting to stop her. The chase ended 50 yards onto my kid's playground, with all the kids out there on recess witnessing us. So, yeah, I live right across the street from the school, so I got to witness a lot of what happened. Very scary as a parent. Thank God there was an SRO there at the time. But, you know, we talked about, if there is a police chase, how can we set up routes to make sure they're not funneled towards school zones? And Chief Foster thought about this. I mean, they take the safety of our kids extremely seriously. They take the safety of our community extremely seriously. But this right here is our weekly police report. It's available in the manager's weekly report, and there's a number at the bottom that's very concerning. We're authorized 184 officers. The way Norman's growing with the tasks that we put on them, I agree with the chief that we should have 215 officers, because right now, out of that 184, we only have 146 that are actually patrolling, or able to actually go out on calls and do their job of protecting us. So we're down on SROs. I mean, last week, we had an individual try to go into where my nephew goes to school. My entire nephew's class saw a person having a mental health crisis. I won't tell you his housing status, but he tried to enter the school. When he couldn't enter the school, he started beating his head on the wall. So blood everywhere, a bunch of kids recording it from the classroom. These are the types of things that, and thank God there was an SRO there, because it was a middle school. Our elementary schools, not all of our elementary schools, have SROs at all times. They're on a rotational basis. I talked to our superintendent this morning. We've had 10 school lockdowns. I think half of those were at elementary schools, and there was not an SRO there half the time. So I've talked to county. County said they're a state agency. Our sheriff's department is having issues. You probably know about that, if you stay up to date on local news and everything. So we're on our own. So I would still contact the county. I would still contact your state representative, because we voted to have SROs in every one of our schools. And I don't care if it is a state agency, you know, our kids are worth it. So, you know, keep reaching out about that, and that's all I have.
Thank you. I have no announcements. Next item on the agenda is consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged in one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with approval of all council members, then that item will be heard in regular order. Staff recommends that item two through item 13 be placed on the consent docket. I need a motion, or I'll entertain a motion, to place items two through 13 on the consent docket.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and second. Motion on the floor is to place items two through 13 on the consent docket. Councilmember?
I don't know why it's not resetting.
You got to announce the vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to place items two through 13 on the consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. You didn't get a vote?
I thought it didn't go through. I apologize. Let's actually...
Let's re-vote it and get it right.
Re-vote.
Okay.
Now you should be able to push a vote.
Cast your vote.
Okay. There we go. All votes have been cast, and the motion to place items two through 13 on the consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to approve items two through 13 on the consent docket. A motion and second. Any comments from council regarding any item on the docket? Hearing none. The motion on the floor is to approve items two through 13 on the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve items two through 13 on the consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 14, consideration of awarding, acceptance, approval, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of a preliminary plat for Brookhaven number 45 addition, generally located approximately one-quarter mile southwest of Rock Creek Road on the west side of Brookhaven Boulevard. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the preliminary plat.
Second.
Okay. Let me mark. From the... here to make a presentation.
Good evening. Mohamed Khan with SMC Consulting, engineer for this project, 815 investment, 73106. Thank you for allowing us to present this item to you. Like to start with a presentation slide. This can work. Here we go. So this is the last part of these various phases of this Brookhaven development, and it's identified as Section 45. It's located south of Rock Creek Road and a half a mile, excuse me, west of 36. Basically, pretty much, we are now finishing up this development, and time the extended dead-end the street to allow for a full circulation there. The item was discussed with the staff, with the on-site utility extension, drainage, access, and everything, and it meets the sub-development standard there. This slide shows you that where this is located, and then the surrounding area. Now, I'll go back a little bit, what has been done in the past. So pretty much, this proposed development includes like 22 lots there. Planning Commission approved it unanimously. Staff recommends approval. There's no change to the zoning there. The development is approximately eight acres there, and no land uses there. Drainage is pretty much overland flow there. We're tying to the existing drainage system for Storms River, and then side flows from northwest direction to southeast direction to an existing detention pond there. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
This is actually an opportunity for members of the public to make comment on it, and then we'll come up for council questions. If you wouldn't mind having a seat, Mr. Khan, we'll be back with you. Has anybody signed up to make a comment?
Yes, Mayor, Paul Wilson.
Evening, council. Paul Wilson, Ward One. I have a couple of questions I'd like to answer. Is how much are these houses going to cost? Norman is currently in a housing crisis. We need over 3,000 homes, but we need the right type of homes. We don't need luxury homes. We don't need big homes. We need affordable housing for everybody. So that's my comment is, I understand this is an addition that's been a long time in development from a long time ago, but like in every situation, you have to realize the situations in the cities change over time. I want to know who's going to be buying these houses, because if I'm not mistaken, that area, they're probably going to be in the $250,000 to $300,000 range. They can correct me if I'm wrong, but that is not what we need. We need smaller homes that the general public can actually afford. So those are my only questions on this one is how big are the lots? How big are the homes, and what does it cost? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ben Plummer? We don't have Ben.
Mr. Khan, would you come back up? Any questions from council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor?
Three.
Three.
I have a quick question regarding storm drainage. So in the staff report, it says storm waterway conveyed to an existing privately maintained detention pond located southeast of this proposed development. So where exactly is the privately maintained detention pond?
So if you were looking at the screen, it's to the southeast corner of the slide, which happens to be the north is up, and then that detention pond wraps around a large platted lot there, which I had the luxury of using the pointer there, then I can point it there. But it's to the very southeast corner.
Southeast corner?
Right.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Councilmember, did you have a question?
Councilmember Holman?
So from what I can tell, this looks like it would be the last piece of the Brookhaven development after all these decades. It looks like these last two connections are it.
Yes.
Okay. And was there any particular reason why it's not a through street instead of two? Well, see, on here, it's a through street, but on here, I have that it's two cul-de-sacs.
I think based on the sizes of these lots, and the length of the cul-de-sac itself provides the access there, and since it complies with the subdivision standard, the circulation is already maintained within the subdivision there for emergency and fire access there. So it's really just a project-driven decision based on the access.
And... Okay, I just wanted to clarify that one. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question for you, Mr. Khan, to be able to answer the previous one.
Yes.
Cost of the houses in this neighborhood, are they by the standard that everything else in Brookhaven goes by, by the subdivision standard?
So I'll say my thought process on it, and I'll have the developer, Evan Nixon, come here if you require a detailed answer on it. It's really a market-driven situation here, and then it conforms with the surrounding laws there. So we don't want to have an unusual small or large size of property, but it needs to conform with the surrounding edges and properties there, and whatever the market dictates, that's what is up here.
What do you estimate the market to be, just in there?
Yeah, I'll defer to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Nixon, would you answer that question for us?
Good evening. Evan Nixon, on behalf of Size Properties, Inc., 1203 Brookhaven Boulevard. First question...
First question I would guess is going to be sizing the lots and the price of the homes to answer our question here, and really, as Councilmember Holman just addressed, this is the last piece of a development that has been going on for about 60 years. I think our first final plat was in 1961, 1962, somewhere in that area. So really, what we're doing is trying to keep this last addition of Brookhaven cohesive and congruent with the surrounding lots that have already been platted, and you'll see that with this. Currently on your screen is the existing expired preliminary plat. We've done, I believe there's four final plats off of this existing prelim, and really the reason we're here tonight is just to keep our preliminary plat up to date and make sure that it is current and approved with the city of Norman in the event that we would decide to go forward with a future development.
Excellent. Any further questions from council? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Nixon. The motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plat. Council members, you may cast your vote. There we go.
All votes have been cast and the motion to approve the preliminary plat passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 15. Consideration of awarding, acceptance, approval, rejection, amendment, indoor postponement of preliminary plat for Summit Lakes addition, Summit Lakes Villas addition, a planned unit development south of Valamita Street and east of 24th Avenue Southeast. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the preliminary plat.
That's approved.
Thank you. A motion and a second. Is there a representative of the applicant here to make a presentation? Mr. Khan?
Counsel. Let me see if I can get this slide here. So, this is about a preliminary plat which had expired previously, and now what we are proposing or requesting is the approval of the, and bringing it up to date with the current development standard for this preliminary plat there. The site itself is located east of the 24th Avenue, and then the south of Valamita. The part of the development itself is approximately 22 acres. It has 66 lots there. A portion of the property is part of the villas, and then there, south of the property, which is kind of IDs and subject track, is part of the Summit Lake addition there. The property itself, kind of, it has a, Summit Lake itself has public street, and the Summit Lake villa has a private street. It's a gated community there. And there is, will be a gate which will stay closed, will not be accessible to public except in case of a fire and emergency for connecting these two portions of the property there. The water lines, utilities extension, sewer extension, all complies with the subdivision standard there. This, as far as the drainage goes, side flows in three different directions. There is a new proposed detention pond proposed in the northwest part of the site, which will flow in its original flow direction there, which is to northwesterly direction. A portion of the side flows towards south to a previously constructed detention pond there, and then a portion of the property flows in northeast direction to Summit Lake or Misty Lake there. So, this, like I say, is divided into three parts. The portion of property which flows towards Misty Lake is approximately three acres there. This site itself was previously included in the overall drainage basin of Misty Lake. So this shows you the previous plat of Summit Lake, and then, again, what you see in front of you is the repl, preliminary plat, replata application there. Again, no change to the zoning, no change to the land use. Planning Commission had approved it. We went through the pre-development meeting with the citizens or our adjacent neighbors there. There were no questions about preliminary plat itself. There were some questions about final plat, like erosion control, which will be addressed when developer submits the application for final plat. I'd be happy to answer any question.
This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comment. Do we have anybody signed up for this item?
Yes, Mayor, Paul Wilson. No?
Okay.
That's all.
If you'll come back, Mr. Khan. Any questions from council? Yes, sir.
Just one real quick. I saw that the detention pond is in Common Area D, but could you explain what Common Area YY is? I see there's some parking spaces on it. I don't know if it's a playground, or if that's intended to be detention as well. Just kind of wanted to get some clarity there. It's the one that is basically on the north, the northernmost portion of the site.
Northwest? You said northwest?
Uh, northernmost.
Northernmost.
Yeah.
So, let me switch back to...
Yeah, it's that one at the top of the screen there.
Yeah. The ID I have is maybe slightly different there, but it's part of the lake, if you're looking at that portion of it.
No, what I'm seeing is surrounded by roads and lots, and it has parking spaces.
Oh, okay. Uh, sorry. Evan, do you know about that?
Once again, Evan Nixon, 1203 Brookhaven Boulevard, on behalf of Size Properties. And to answer your question, Councilmember Peacock, is that I believe what you're seeing there up, it would be the northwestern corner, is a common space area with parking, like diagonal parking around it?
Yes.
That is designed to basically mirror the existing gazebo in Common Area of Summit Lakes Villa, Section 1.
Okay.
So basically, just an open space for the neighborhood to enjoy. We typically build that gazebo area, have parking around it for visitors, and then do pick tables, benches, things like that.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't a detention pond.
No, no, no. Thank you very much.
Any other count? Yes, sir.
Just given that there have been issues with the dam, the Misty Lake Dam, does this or how does this have any impact on it?
So, the proposed site itself, like I said, drains in three different directions. The northeastern part is the smallest part of this proposed preliminary plat, and that part itself was part of the overall watershed for Misty Lake, for Misty Dam there. So, in term of the size of the, this drainage area, which is not the new drainage area, it was already part of the overall design of the Misty Dam there. So, basing on the assumption or restatement, we don't think that they'll have any adverse impact.
And these homes will be part of the Summit Lakes HOA?
Yes. So, like I said, that the proposed preliminary plat is divided into two parts. One is a private, so there are two, HOA will be part of it, and the area which drains to the northeast direction will be part of the HOA for Summit Lake, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Council members? Okay. The motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plat. Excuse me. Council members, you may cast your votes. Thank you, Mr. Khan.
Cast and the motion to approve the preliminary plat passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item is miscellaneous comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address city council. Due to Open Meeting Act regulations, council is not able to participate in discussion during miscellaneous comments. Remarks should be directed as a whole and limited to three minutes or less. And clerk, do we have anybody signed up for miscellaneous comments?
Yes, Mayor, Paul Wilson.
Paul Wilson, still Ward 1. I wanted to give some information to council in regards to the income in Norman compared to some of the other cities in the area. Median income in Mustang is $46,000, and then for the household, $84,000. Yukon is $40,000, household $75,000. Our capital city, Oklahoma City, which is the largest city in Oklahoma, median income is $36,000, household $64,000. The third largest city is Norman. Ours is the lowest on all these, at $32,000 and $62,000 household. However, I've noticed every other city on that list, other than Norman, has been building houses at $200,000 or less. I've even seen one in Mustang for, where they started $190,000. That's unprecedented in Norman. I've never seen a sign anywhere in Norman for $190,000. The vast majority of the developments that we're doing now, they're in the mid to upper $200,000s. We just saw one approved last year-ish down in Eagle Cliff, where they flat out said $280,000. So my question is, why are we not trying to get developers in here that will build the houses that Norman is so desperately needing? Don't tell me they're not out there. They just built an apartment complex literally just east of the Oklahoma City fairgrounds. That should be prime real estate, next to the fairgrounds. They are low-income, affordable housing. So don't, we, we need to attract these developers. It's not hard. I don't know what the city can do to attract them, cut costs on connection fees when it comes to the water, offer them some incentives, because the one thing Norman desperately needs is affordable housing. Like I said previously, we need 300,000 homes by 2045. But if we build the wrong types of houses, it's just going to get worse. We don't need to be building houses for people up in Oklahoma City to drive down here, or come down here, because they work up there, they live down here. What about the citizens in Norman? They're getting left behind. So, I know we have a homeless, or an unhoused issue. One of the issues is affordable housing. There's a lot of people even staying at our shelter that have jobs, cannot find affordable housing. Most of our apartment complexes in Norman are either full with their Section 8, or they've stopped taking them altogether. So, I know we're better than Oklahoma City. I know we're better than Mustang. I know we're better than Yukon. Norman needs to do better.
Ben Plummer made it? Nope. Richard Baxter? I don't see Mr. Baxter. Dan Munson?
Hi, I'm Dan Munson from Ward 6. First of all, I'd like to just express my condolences to the Shelton family and any city of Norman employees that were impacted by his passing, so. On a less, on a different note here, I think recycling's gone really well. I've had my recycling picked up, I think, three times now, and it's been about a 15 to 20-minute window, so they've been really consistent with me, so I think that has been really good. I would like to see, and I've talked about this before, I'd like to see compost increase $10 per scoop until we hit $40. I'll come back to that, why I think we need to do that. So right now, we're charging $10 a scoop. If you go over and shovel it yourself, it's free. I think we should keep that plan, but if you're getting a scoop, I think it needs to go up to $40. $10 a year gives us an opportunity to measure that. The reason why I'd like to do that is, I'd like for the city to consider purchasing a mobile trash can cleaning truck and offer that as a, as a service. I don't know about you guys, but my trash cans get pretty funky in the summertime, and I'd like for them to be clean. And then I'd also like to have the opportunity to purchase 95-gallon compost trash cans from the city. So I'd like the city to buy them, because they have much better buying power than I do. Have them a different color than the traditional trash can and recycle can. What that'll do is that'll speed up the pickup time, because right now, it's, they're picking up trash bags most of the time. So if they can use one of the sidearms and lift that up, instead of having two guys get off the back of the truck, take the bags out, open them up, it would go a lot faster. So I'd like for us to consider that. I believe we have an opioid settlement coming to the city. What I would like the city of Norman to consider is a two-year pilot program, established with a current sober center facility. So have a certain number of slots at one or two, maybe three different sober centers that we pay for within the city, and then measure the results. Clearly define that. Does anybody know what license plates were most common this weekend? Texas. Most of the fans came up from Texas. So we should figure out how to market that. All right, my time's up. I had more.
Evan?
Well, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. You know, Evan Dunn, Ward 7. I thought last week was going to be like Item 14. I thought it was going to be unanimous. I didn't think that we would settle for something that was so shallow, so superficial. The renderings look great. Artists have applied their skills, and they've invested hours. But I'll be the bad guy. I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem telling some of the most influential people that they, they are supporting a bad idea, and that they are intimidating people to support bad ideas. Didn't you hear, Nash? Didn't you hear Holman? Didn't you hear my reasons? You could have been like, those are good reasons. Those are reasons to send it back to the designers. Let's formulate something else. Take those comments as guidance. But we didn't. So, I've got to figure out what's going on, because I thought that I had been somewhat effective at being persuasive. So I've got to see, what do you all see when you look at me from the sides? It's got to be how I look, or it's got to be how I sound, or maybe it's what I say, or the way that I say it. I don't know what it is, but I've got to figure out how to get this data to convince you to protect future generations. Whenever you protect resources, you are protecting future generations. I don't know how many times I have to say that. I'll say it over and over until I'm blue in the face. You know, I wish I looked like Tony Robbins. You know? See him here? Look at him. What's he doing? Ah! He's roaring and he's opening. Every, that's the opposite of what we do all day. We're holding, we're grasping. And, hey, I'll, I'll teach you, I'll teach you, I'll teach you, I'll teach you, I'll teach you. And you know why I'm, I'm a great teacher? Because I have a rare form of brain cancer. I have the greatest motivation to perfect myself. I have 18 months experience in China, living immersed in the heart of our greatest rival, but nobody cares about that. Nobody's asking me questions.
No, Mayor, that is all.
All right. Counsel? We stand adjourned from this meeting and will reconvene at 7:30 in the other room. Thank you. Except for the birthday boy, yeah. I just put my pen up. I go in the bathroom and make a big sound.
Yes, sir.
It's another trigger. I guess it's figuring out the end of the movie, I have to go to the bathroom.